Solar projects. Solar projects in general are pretty low impact. When they're installed, we are. So they're pretty low, low impact in nature of the drive piles into the ground or not, concreting them, there's no sonotubes. They're actually just driven into the ground with a pile driver similar to what you'd see with the girders going in for a, you know, on the side of a road with a barrier. Some really simple galvanized steel racking and turlings are laid on this, and then the solar panels are mounted to that racking. Most of the wiring is underground when you're inside the fence line, so like this area, all the wiring is gonna be underground. Or at least like nicely zipped up with zip ties behind the solar panels. And then they go to, all the power gets consolidated with conduit to a centralized pad like this. And on this pad, there'll be, you know, an inverter that turns the power from DC to AC. There's some communications equipment like a, that sends a little signal that tells the asset owner how it's performing like every five minutes. There's a transformer, and then there's a fence that goes around the outside, and that's kind of it for the project equipment. We're not building any sort of buildings, there's no street lighting, there are no large towers, there's no substation. The project literally connects into the wires that you see right behind you. So there's no like CMP corridor kind of thing of what's proposed. We're, we do show a corridor here, but that's not necessarily what we're seeking. What we like to be is close to the substation, right there. That's kind of the coincidence.
Why didn't you do it on the power?
What, what's that?
Why didn't you install those on the power?
Uh, this is a pretty small project, and so we are only stepping it up to twelve four seven KV. That's a, that's gonna be like hundred and fifteen KV, it's too high for our project. If we were doing a really, really big project, this, this may seem big to you guys, and I, I don't mean to minimize that, but like, you know, if it was like two hundred acres, yeah, then we'd tap into that.
No, but I'm saying, you're gonna go from there up to the, up to the wires that we're tapped into, right?
That's right, yes.
And what happens if that malfunction, does it shut out, shut out wires off?
It does not, no. Nope, so there's tons of safety protocols and, uh, just like any switchgear in any commercial building. There are breakers, there are fuses, everything is designed to be redundant, so that if, if the project for some reason goes offline, it's not gonna send the whole neighborhood to a power outage.
I'll figure it out.
Oh, what's that? Uh, this, this one, uh, over here, um, it's a total of ten plus six acres, so that's ten acres and then six.
All on the same line?
Can I, uh, just go to your question real quick, um, just another point about the electrical is that, um, uh, there's, there's a re-closer, do you know what a re-closer is? It's, it's basically like a switch that CMP can throw remotely, they push a button and it disconnects something, right? Or reconnects, that's why it's called a re-closer, they can re-close it. So, uh, if for some reason there was a problem on the grid, like there's power lines down and there's, there's power going places that shouldn't, CMP will have the ability to disconnect this thing remotely at the push of a button. They don't have to mobilize a truck to disconnect it, so there's a lot of redundant features to a solar project that are.
So that, that's.
It's all code, it's all code required.
So that's just a, you'll put it on homeowners property, homeowners get the.
Of this particular homeowner? No, yeah, so the way that this works, I'll get to your, I haven't forgotten that you asked a question, but the way these projects are working from the sale of their power is that they are connecting straight into the lines, which is different than what you might do on your own house, which goes to your breaker panel through your meter and then out to the lines, right? So that's called a behind-the-meter project. Ours is, uh, designed to not have a load, right? The grid is technically the load, and so all the electrons spill out onto the grid, but they have to pass through a meter that we install. And that meter will tie to, uh, different accounts. So this project will be a hundred percent residential subscribers. So you could buy power from this project without having to spend it. You would just check a box that says I'm gonna save money, like fifteen percent of my electric. So it's, it's, it's not replacing behind-the-meter options, but for people that, um, maybe they're in the woods, they don't have a lot of sun exposure, they, they don't wanna put out the cash to buy a project, um, or maybe they're like, ah, I'm gonna move in three years, I don't know if I really wanna invest this. This is a, just a different, uh, path to market for solar power for people that live in Maine. And all the power has to stay in Maine, it's, it's not like.
Why you pick that particular area?
Why here?
Yeah.
Well, for this particular one, proximity to the substation is good. It means that we are, um, it's, it's in a place where there's load, technically like a substation sort of absorbs that load. So that helps, um, not having to do a lot of upgrades from the project to the substation. If we install a project that's like ten miles away from the substation, it means more upgrade costs that we have to pay for. Maybe we have to reconductor the lines, there's more equipment from us to the substation, so that's, that's part of why. And these are, these are really close to each other, they're, you know, not even a half mile apart, so.
But it's a nice field right there before the substation, it'd be nice putting a field.
Yeah, I, I, you know, we didn't do the site selection, so the developer prob, I don't know if you guys have all gotten like things in the mail. Not only like solicitation letters of like, hey, wanna lease your land, right? But, hey, wanna buy power? I think just get, like, I, I'm getting them too. I, I save these things. I got one and my wife got one from next year, like, they don't know who they're sending them to, but now I get to use them in my presentations. So, you know, a lot of people say, well, why this field versus the other one? It's landowner preference, I think a lot of people are being approached, and some people don't wanna do a solar project, and that's okay. But kind of back to the, the, the build, actually, let's get to your question.
Well, no, it was all around him and listening to your talk where you sort of answered.
If we have everybody state their name when they ask a question, between the masks and not being inside where we're on video.
Well, hopefully it will.
Oh, are you, are you doing, oh, gosh.
Well, we'll see.
Good job. Make sure you do it sideways, too.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't think.
But I'll ask it again.
Now, halfway through? No, nope, just, 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 just this one. No, this is a different landowner, yeah.
We're gonna start with this one, then we'll move to the second site.
Oh, and that was not close to us too.
So, I was gonna say something.
Right.
Oh, so, you know, back to like, why would a landowner wanna do this on their property versus another? Oftentimes, both of these projects, as well as most of the projects that we're working on, we're working on seventy of these projects across Maine, they're most of the time a lease, not a, not a purchase and sale agreement. And the idea is that the landowners wanna retain that land, they wanna keep owning it, because maybe their grandkids wanna build a house on that land someday. So what we've done with the, the town of Lebanon is we've submitted decommissioning plan. What's gonna happen at the end of the useful life of this thing, whenever that is, and who's responsible for that? And so, these developers are willing to put up, uh, some sort of surety, um, to, to provide the, the funds to do so. So if they go bankrupt or the projects are abandoned, which is highly unlikely, because these are just very simple projects that somebody will own, there's money set aside to decommission it, and at the end of it, we just pull the posts out, resell the solar panels, sell secondary weldings, we scrap the steel, we can scrap the wire. There's really not much to these projects, it's not like we have a big, um, asphalt parking lot that's gonna need to be torn up and there's a ton of stormwater controls underneath it, it's just gonna follow the contours of the land, and then somebody could build a house on it if they want to. Or whatever.
Or you explain how it stays field, meadow, is.
Yeah, so, so this particular one, there's very little tree clearing here, there's, there's, um, there's a kind of a hedgerow here with a stone wall and some trees in the back, but the MacRillis project, uh, for the most part, as you guys know, is, is field. Um, so we will ensure that there's a, a field, uh, underneath the solar panels, it's not like we put crushed stone or anything. So we'll plant a conservation seed mix, something that grows up, falls over, grows up, falls over. Can't mow it twice a year per our DEP stormwater, um, uh, permit, because we need it to count as a stormwater buffer. We need that water to get in and infiltrate into the ground right away. Um, so the idea is not to keep this manicure, um, once it's built, you might see a pickup truck there four times a year. It's pretty low maintenance, um, and again, no lighting or anything. The idea is not to make it look like a golf course, it's to kind of like maintain the scenic aspect of this. Um, the fence will be an agricultural style fence, so it's wooden posts, it's like a deer fence. We're, we're okay with small mammals going through the fence, bunnies and whatnot moving through the, through the project area. It keeps deer out, it encourages them to stay out, but if they can jump in, then they can jump out. Uh, it's a seven foot tall fence, so it's pretty secure. But the reason we put that in there is, you know, one, we don't want people going into it, and two, uh, it's code, so we have to do it. We gotta abide by N E C code.
You said the, uh, the poles are just gonna get put in the ground and low impact stuff like that, but you said the wiring goes underground, so does that mean it's gonna get torn up to put the wiring under there?
Um, it's just trenching, it's just a trench, so we try to consolidate our trenching in certain locations, so it's like a bank of conduit. So we might like stack four conduits at the bottom of the trench, but then like stacking it up. So it's, we really don't wanna go wide here, we wanna keep it narrow. Yeah, it's pretty low, it's pretty minimal, and then it's just filled over with dirt, it's not, uh, concrete. The only spot that there's probably concrete in it, to full transparency, is going from the pad to this first pole. Once it turns into medium voltage, that's when you need to cover it in, in concrete, but again, it's below grade, it's not like it's this big concrete structure.
Could you point out on there again where the substation is right now?
It's, uh, there's kind of a light blue box right here, and that's, that's why all these power lines are kind of coming through here in proximity to that.
Okay, and the road's headed like this, right?
Uh, West Lebanon Road, that's right here.
Oh, okay.
Yep. This is north.
Go around a bit. So that's why they put that power station in up on West Lebanon Road, they had intentions for this a few years ago?
No, not, not.
Why was that really put up there then?
Couldn't tell you. CMP does what CMP wants.
But you're locking into it, so.
Not necessarily, we're locking into the distribution line, so there, this is totally unrelated, and I can guarantee that, because CMP has no interest in helping us. Does that make sense?
I'm, I'm trying to make sense, is this MacRillis's right here?
Yep, both of these are, yep.
Okay.
Um, this project.
So it's only on the right side of the road?
Can we have one question?
Driving north. Yep.
Can we have, hey, can we have one question at a time, please, just so Chris can answer them, and everybody can hear?
Do you wanna stick on this project?
Yeah, let's finish this one.
Sure. All right, we'll, we'll get to the MacRillis thing, I think they wanna do.
Oh, I just wanted a target, 'cause I was having trouble figuring out exactly where you were saying.
Yeah, try to finish this one, and then we'll switch to the other project.
Um, so I, I guess any other projects, specific details in this one, we're, we are cutting trees for this, we're staying out of wetlands, we're doing a property, uh, boundary survey as we speak. The, the difference between this project though, um, is that the, the panels on this one are actually, um, single axis trackers. So, um, on the MacRillis project, it's, it's, uh, they're fixed, they're gonna be like this and they won't move, they'll face south. On the, um, the, or the fact that Carson, um, they, the panels start in the east and then they rotate to the west at the end of the day, and then they reset. So they just go like this every day, but they're like incremental movements, it's not like this, not like there are motors running like constantly at a high warp, they just kind of, they'll go. And then every fifteen minutes, they'll, they'll move a little bit. Other than that, the, um, characteristics of which project are about, about the same?
That, is that more than one homeowner?
One, single.
Who's your homeowner now?
Uh, Carson, yeah, she's just a landowner, and she's not necessarily benefiting from the, um, electrical standpoint, she's just leasing the land.
How much noise today night?
Uh, so the transformer, there's two, two things on the project that make those, um, a transformer and the inverters. The transformer will be the noisier piece, so let's focus on that, 'cause we wanna talk about the noisiest thing. That's what's on, uh, the pad, right there. We work with the DEP a lot on these projects, and they are really stringent on sound, preserving that, so at thirty-three feet, it produces sixty decibels, which is about what we're doing right here, talking, and so if you go further away, it starts to get a little further, and if you keep going further down the road, it's less. So virtually, people that are abutters won't hear these projects. So they make sound, I'm not gonna say they're silent, but the.
Sixty is like equivalent to an air conditioner, just to help out.
Exactly, like a pad-mounted air conditioner, that's actually the example that I use all the time, yeah. Um, it's about that noise, so, um, and the transformer is on twenty-four seven, but the inverters are only on during the day, because there's no sun, so there's no reason for them to function, so they turn off. And it's really just the fan, 'cause it's a, it's a, it's an electrical component, so it needs a fan to cool off. Yep.
What kind of environmental effects are they gonna be with this swampland all around there, and then rainwater hitting these panels and running off of them?
Yep, sure.
What's, what's gonna seep into the, 'cause I know a lot, that swamp all connects right into mine land, I don't want that crap running into it.
No, that will not be a problem, so the DEP and other, uh, agencies regard the solar panels, uh, they do not regard them as impervious. So they recognize that when rain hits the area of the project, that it is just infiltrating into the ground, um, just as normal. We see no change in the runoff to abutters at all. Part of the reason that we're able to maintain that is by not mowing the field more than twice a year, so that the grass can be healthy and tall enough to absorb that water and put it right into the ground. So we see no impacts to your, um, you know. The only impervious surfaces on this project are the road, the access road, and, um, the pad, the equipment pad, which is maybe like ten by twenty or something.
And what about like birds, I mean, in the, in the fall and then when we, uh, and then the spring? We have trees that fall over, and then, and then flying, and then, and then, and then, it always, it's all the same.
No, no, we, um, we have, we have consulted, um, with Maine, uh, Department of, uh, with Maine Fish on this. Um, there's no concern to, to birds that are traveling in terms of interrupting their habitat.
What about the birds as far as the, uh, like high bush blueberries and stuff outside of the food source, like, are you guys leaving the bushes? 'Cause, I mean, the orioles hit that like crazy, but just spring and fall mi- migration, it's like it's kind of a common place?
On, on Carson's land?
Uh, MacRillis.
Okay, we'll get to that in a second, 'cause I think they wanna stay on the Carson.
Try to do one at a time, and then we'll.
Sorry. Just try. Yeah. Did that answer your question about birds?
Their names, what they're seeing.
You know, yeah, we, we're finding that these projects can provide different habitat, as opposed to totally removing the habitat. So one of the habitats in Maine that's most threatened right now, and like Maine Autobahn would tell you this, is fringe habitat. And that is that transition from meadow to, uh, to, to mature trees. It's where bunnies can go in and then come back to the forests to be sheltered, it's where bats like to feed, it's where there are a lot of bugs, so birds kind of feast in that area. So, you know, we're, we're actually creating this habitat so that it's beneficial. It's one of the, it's, I'm, I'm trying to get one of my developer clients to do a study, so that we can actually have something there. But we are creating that habitat nonetheless, but I'd like to see like a post, or, or a tree in a post data set that would just be interesting to, to look at. Well, but we're also still, that habitat still remains intact, it's still a meadow habitat for bees, birds, pollinators. All of those things are still going to thrive in this area, it's not like a no-fly zone and a no-go zone for, for mammals or birds. Those are all able to go, and we can raise the fence off the ground a little bit. Birds will still build, build nests behind the solar panels, they're still gonna try to, um, so it's, it's.
A lot of view in that area.
There's a lot.
I bet, I bet.
And taking away the trees, it's like.
Right.
Carson's homeland, it's all, she's already select cut it, she's done what she wanted to, now it's all in the area.
She has eighty acres.
The, the, the total parcel, uh, parcel of that, the limit of disturbance is nineteen point eight acres, so that's kind of our, what you see in green, that's all, um, that's the project area.
Is there any lights at all?
Nope.
There's nothing on any of it at all?
No, no street lighting, no security light.
There's no lights on the panels themselves, or?
Nope, no, totally dark. It's a quiet neighborhood, I think that's one of the things that we try to help people understand. This could have been a subdivision, it could have been tons of homes. This is a way for them to sort of create a quiet neighborhood that banks the land that still keeps it in their ownership, to do something that it may be in thirty or forty years. But I, I get it, I, you know, it's, it's sort of, it's, it's impact, um, but we're just helping you understand kind of what is the nature of the impact.
Any more questions on the Carson property? So we can squeeze in a few more.
When are you guys starting that?
What?
When are you gonna start it?
Chris?
Probably next year, like next spring.
They're still in the approval process.
Yeah, we're not gonna start here like next week.
So you're not gonna ruin our hunting season this year then?
Yeah.
Just next year, maybe.
I don't know if we're gonna ruin your hunting season, but we're.
Well, it disturbs them when a big thing like this comes in, and it's different to them, lose them right out.
Sure. Yep. All right, so can we, is any more questions on this one, so we can move on to the MacRillis property?
That's our territory, so you might not wanna go there.
The fence line, is that going around your whole property or just around what you do?
It's, if you, when you get up clear, I'll show it to you, it's, um, it's a little hard to see, but you can see that dotted line, it kind of hugs, it's twenty feet off the panels usually.
And this is all cleared here on the.
That's cleared for shading purposes, right. Much of this.
All these trees will be left?
If you see it in green, that's all we're cutting.
And this here is all gonna be left?
Yeah, I think that's.
This is real wet.
It's, yeah, this is all wet, this, the dark gray is wet. So I think it's important to understand, we're not clearcutting this entire parcel. We're taking nineteen point eight acres where it is green, everything else will remain wooded, including to these, these folks down here, that's a hundred and thirty, the ones who.
This is us, this is us, this is us.
Perfect.
This is where the line actually.
This is, yeah, so we're doing a, we're doing a boundary survey, this is just like what Maine GIS has, it's not very good.
No, because this line here, this, this line here is actually right here.
Right on. Yep. Yeah, so, so I think what, my intent here is when I coached my client on the design, I said, you gotta leave some buffer to the people that live here, so that we, um, you know, we're not like all of a sudden clearing right up to your field. Uh, this is the clearing limit right here, the green. I think, I think you're right, I think this.
The line is actually.
I think, I, I think you're right.
'Cause I'm starting to recognize it the more.
I, we're, we're doing the battery survey.
The line is right here, this is here, it's over here.
If you look on Google Earth, you can see the cut line, actually. But the guys.
I should have told you to come a little later, I'm sorry.
And we'll, we'll update, we'll update, oh, did, okay, we'll update the design, um, based on that, it'll get adjusted, but this is the best we can do right now, so.
Chris, are we ready to move on to the other property?
Um, yeah, do you guys feel like you're, and I, you know what, I, I can stay afterwards with people kind of like offline if, if they want.
Sure.
So, so I'm happy to, happy to give you my card.
So we can work through this process?
Yeah.
All right, so the second project is Lebanon CSG, which is the MacRillis property.
Yep.
And Chris also represents that property, so.
Yep.
We've kind of covered this already, the stat, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, what you're seeing here again in green is the project area, it's a little harder to see, but there's some trees back here, there's a dark green line showing the existing tree line, that's showing you where we'll do some tree clearing, but for the most part, we're utilizing the open space.
Trees.
It is still over an acre of tree clearing, so we needed to pull a DEP stormwater permit by rules to do this work. But this one is a little bit more straightforward, pretty obvious where it's going, if you know the report.
So back to the question about the, uh, you covered the trees with the acre and everything, but what about the, like, high bush blueberry and all that?
Which is, is there somewhere around here that I'm not understanding where that still is?
Yeah, uh, so you've got the tree line in between, kind of like the opening by the meadow and everything?
Here?
It, and.
The, the stone wall?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, right around there, if you go up, there's a good portion of it, and actually on the opposite side too, right on the border of their property.
Yep, we're not gonna be able to keep those, to be honest, they're gonna be taken out and we won't be able to replant them.
Okay, appreciate the honesty.
Sure, yeah. It's, part of the challenge is that trying to keep a resource like that, um, intact would be tricky from an O and M standpoint, so really hard to kind of say, I, I won't say where or who, but I was on another project, somewhere in the midcoast where they have a lot of blueberries, and the developer that I wasn't representing also wound up and said, yeah, we're just gonna replant all those blueberries, it'd be great. And I was like, that's totally not true, there's no way that you can replant native blueberries, those just come up native, you can't plant them. So we're never gonna, we're just gonna do a conservation seed mix that's native to Maine, that's like, you know, gonna regenerate, so.
But that's, you know, all low kind of grass type stuff, nothing bush-like, right?
Uh, it's like a fescue, so it'll grow, no, not like a bush, it's gonna probably grow to like knee-high and then fall over.
Yeah.
It's more like a dark green, kind of finer grass, um, it's not rye, so it doesn't like go crazy high. It's kind of nice that it, um, actually, some, some places are calling it a solar farm mix, like, uh, seed companies are starting to make this now, because they know that it's like a marketing tool for them, 'cause it's basically like a chewing fescue, red fescue mix. Yep.
If you find that the, I'm just back on the Carson one, or on any of them, that they come back and the, um, when they come back with everything from doing the marking and that type of thing, will this, will it remain at least a hundred and thirty feet like from the stone wall?
I don't think, I don't think that's the problem area, I think it's this line right here, the northern line. I think that this is pretty clear as ju, as, as depicted with that field limit, so I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I think we can keep the one thirty, we're probably gonna have to do some rearranging to like buy, um, Carson's house, 'cause it's gonna shave off some of the panels to the north, but that has always been a thing that I've driven. I don't know you guys, and it's nice to meet you, but like, when I, when we did the design, they were like, this is what we wanna do, and I said, well, first things first, you gotta, you gotta put a buffer there, you can't cut these trees, I guarantee it'll be an issue, so, that's, that's a, something I'm driving towards.
Has anybody looked?
Also the wetlands, sorry, the wetlands are a limiting factor there, we don't, we don't wanna.
This is the driest year right here.
This is the driest year we've had.
You wait till next year, it's gonna be wet, real wet.
I know.
It's dried up right now, it shouldn't be, yeah.
It's crazy, um, but those kind of protect you, because we're not interested in clearing trees and wetlands on this project, um, so that's kind of a buffer.
Uh, so has anybody done any sort of, I don't know, maybe you have an answer for this already, but has anybody looked into the effect on people's property value? In terms of, you know, I live right by that power station, so I'm thinking, so now you got the power station, which kind of sucks anyway, you know, it's an ISO, I should put it. Um, and then you're gonna have all these power panels around it and everything, and then I'm thinking, if I ever wanted to resell my house, it's like, who's gonna wanna live there, you know?
Yeah, you know, I've been doing solar for ten years, um, residential solar, commercial solar, and now doing like development and utility scale stuff, so I've kind of seen the range of it, and it's always been a question. And I think sometimes people ask also, if I have solar on my house, how much more will I be able to sell my house for? Because it's gonna be something that people want, but that's not what you're asking, I, I recognize that, but it's.
I actually already got solar through, uh, Arcadia, so.
Oh, cool, it's, but it's always kind of this like, where does value come from? And there's just not really great data to support that it decreases home value for this kind of a project, nor one that would increase it. We've found that it's relatively neutral, is, is, is what's out there, and I'm, I'm just being honest, I, I, given that I've done this a while, I've had opportunities to sort of sift through the data, and it's always never really been an issue in terms of, uh, the home sale value. Yeah, again, not a guarantee, not able to say like, I guarantee you're totally not gonna have a problem, but I can tell you that there is no data to suggest that, that it would cause your, the home, your home value to go down.
Might be a personal thing then, just because like I said, I get solar, I'm a supporter of solar in places where it doesn't affect, uh, a whole lot of people and how they can do it naturally.
Sure.
And it's just, I, I look at it like, I don't wanna really be looking at those, I have a nice field to look at in a, a few directions.
Yeah.
But, uh, I don't know, it's just one of those things.
Yeah, I hear ya, I hear ya.
Well, the Carson project's gonna be off the road anyways, it's gonna be, what do you really be visible from the road?
Yeah, you won't see it from West Lebanon Road, um, I mean, there's, there'll be some clearly, there'll be something happening back there, 'cause you'll see these poles that'll go back, but they're no different than poles like you see right here. So that's really only a visible part of the project that you can see.
Nothing's over for nothing, I don't know.
What's that?
I said, nothing's out, never for nothing, there's always some kind of a.
Yeah, 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 no, I, yeah, you can always see a little bit of something, I'm not saying it's invisible, but, um, that project's a little bit different than the MacRillis project, in that respect. Um, yeah, but other than that, I don't really have anything else that, uh, that would be specific to this project, unless there are questions about.
Any other questions, or, I think Chris has said he'd stick around and ask some of the.
Yeah, I've got some cards here, you guys can get in touch with me.
Anybody has?
Yep.
What's the next step in your planning here?
For that one, project.
They're both on the same track, so, I'll, I'll let you answer that.
What's your biggest, what's your biggest concern with the project, 'cause you.
What's your biggest, what's your biggest concern with the project, because you keep saying with that?
It's next to us.
Okay, I'm not here and what you have to say.
And being an eyesore on our property.
Okay, so you're...
Where's your house on this thing?
We're right next to Carson.
Afraid it's right?
We both, we're afraid it's, yes.
And you're not, you need to stop these trees between, there'd be a buffer between you and it.
Uh, depends where she lays it. I'm not exactly sure, Danny's better at this than me. I can go home and show you.
This is Rebecca's house right here.
We ATV riding everything up there, we're right there. We hunt out there?
Keep in mind, this, this line four, I think the property, we're doing a boundary survey now, and I think it's gonna change.
You can't say it won't change, because it does, we see other projects happening, and it changes that.
But she didn't actually speak, so...
That's right, yes, that's Carson's house, yep. That's a wetland, these are all wetlands, right? I think, I think this is, this is like Maine property lines, but we're doing the boundary survey today, and last... We use this, the panels go here up, they're gonna come in, you know, here's what they're gonna be. We have to have a certain setback button, you can't build right up there. So, so that, this is your house? You're in this, yep, so I think that's good, I'm not, I'm just, we're, I'm presenting you with the data that I know. And that is this line of what Maine property lines give us. In two weeks, I'll probably have a CAD file of the boundary survey, and we'll adjust this project. The reason we're here with...
So if it moves down a little bit, this line, how's it gonna affect them then, down here?
See, we have all this land, so... So the projects are real, they're like ligers, we can move them in any shape, as you can see, one of them's a different shape, this here's a different shape, we can manipulate them however we see fit to work around natural resources, and to save our property lines.
Oh, I have one for, I have one, I just, I use it when I need to.
So is it setbacks we're worried about at this point?
No, it's, 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 this, this...
I wanna hear from, I'm on the plane, so I just wanna hear.
So this, Owen Haskell is out there today, doing the boundary survey. If you go on Google Earth, you can clearly see a cut line right here, and this has been forested. And it kind of tilts, you see, that's probably the property, and then it wraps around, so you almost can tell that it connects this corner of the field, you guys live, and it goes straight up here. This is almost just like a straight line. Again, folks, I'm just, we presented this with the best information possible, if Owen Haskell comes back and they said, "We did the deed research, we know where the property lines are, we put pins in there, this is what it is." And there's still a lump or something, so be it, we're just leaning on the professionals that do that work. But I called Owen Haskell today about this, because I knew that this was gonna be an issue, and I think he's like, "Yeah, I think that's what the problem is." Did, did you do a property, a boundary survey recently?
We did.
It would be, it would be helpful if we could see it, because then we can, we use, Owen Haskell would love to see that information, because they'll use the research. Fantastic, thank you, thank you for sharing that, because that helps us, helps us...
This one's you?
Yep, right here. It really helps us figure out where we're at, so thank you for participating.
So this is both of you right here?
Yes, yeah, we're up in here.
So are you, are you concerned about noise or visual, what are you concerned about? Just so that we, when we're going through the approval of...
The animals going through there?
I'm listening, it's wonderful.
We understand, and that's why we had a public guarantee, wanted to hear everybody's concerns.
And where's your property?
With me.
Okay.
And you live right there.
So you own, so you two are together?
Yeah.
And you own all of this right here?
Yes.
Got it, but it's all right here, and then you own this square right here?
And they shared, so our surveyors knocked on their door today?
This is ours, this is us, this is ours, and this is ours.
Too many people are talking, so I totally can't understand what you're saying, sorry.
Our surveyors, Owen Haskell, they, they were onsite today, doing the boundary survey, doing the fieldwork, and they knocked on their door and asked them to see their survey. Owen Haskell got a picture of their survey.
So are we thinking that these lines are not a hundred percent correct, is what we're thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think that the line will go like this, this is the best information that we have right now, based on Maine, these are, these are Maine GIS properties, right? So as best as they can be, but that's why we're doing a boundary survey here. We did a boundary survey on the MacRillis property, we just haven't done one here. If that's the case, then this project...
But here, this is, this comes back.
This is a limiting factor, there's wetlands, we don't wanna go in.
I'm just saying, but the property line is back.
Oh, right, it does go to the field.
No, no, there's a stone wall.
So were you concerned that some of this encroached into your property, is that what your concern is, or you just don't want it next to you?
Don't want it next to me. I'll answer, because it isn't always here.
Well, we like to take in everything, and so we can see how we can make things better.
Yeah, but we want to have concerns in the public, so we know what everybody's concerned about.
So, I mean, obviously, if they're, if they're within the lines of what the town ordinances are, what the state ordinances are, we have to approve the project. But ultimately, our goal is to make sure that the general public is happy with what this project remains, so if we have to add in any buffer lines, if, you know... We wanna make everybody happy, while allowing this property owner to do what they want with their property, but we have to hear from you to determine how we can do that.
Right now, our setbacks are forty feet from the boundary line, you know this line's gonna be adjusted, so we have to... Because that's, well, so, most towns in Maine don't define what is, what, they don't say, "Here's our solar panel setback," so it's a structure. So we're just, we're calling the solar panels a structure. Yeah, that's the, that's the book. I mean, this, to the solar panels themselves, that's gonna be like almost double that, you know, just...
Pretty much entirely, we don't want to know this whole front of the land, just us.
Um, that's probably, that's...
We, well, we did put on public hearing, and we have had four meetings with you at this point, so it's been about three and a half months, that they've all been recorded.
This is the first time we heard it, yeah.
We should have been the first one.
Yeah, and then we ended up letting him know, because he's our neighbor, too.
I was wondering why somebody was poking up and ripping down through my land.
Right, so springtime, while we were gone, somebody was on our property, hanging ties.
And, and you know, that's, that's kind of, that's coming from us, my team did that, and the reason is because this is... We didn't know that we were on your land, sir, we thought that we were on the subject property, which is as mapped as this. I get that, I'm just telling you, there's limited, when we're handed a project, they don't say, "Here's the boundary survey, here's everything that we just did." We're given the best information that we have, which is these property lines, and we noted that there were some blazing, and we weren't quite sure, but we mapped it anyway. If it's a problem, we can go to your property and remove all those files.
Where they did.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just telling you that we're, we're very sensitive.